For the slow start this morning, made some updates on our agenda. So before we get the meeting called to order, I'll ask for everybody silence your cellphones for us, please. Pastor Ron Gannett will lead, send a prayer for those that want to participate. And Mr. McLaurie, will you do the pledge for us? Okay, thank you.
Let's bow our heads and our hearts together. Oh, Father in heaven, we come into your presence today thanking you for the joy of being neighbors and friends in this county. Lord, we just pray that your blessing would be upon our people and your public servants today, that you would protect us from evil and make us a blessing to each other. But most of all, may we sense your wonderful presence and your glory with us. We thank you for this Board of Supervisors and we pray, Lord, that you would honor them for the sacrifices and labors of love they give for us. And I pray that you'd use this meeting to unify us and help us sense and do your will on earth as it is in heaven, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll call this Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. First of all, I want to note that Supervisor Goodman is participating through telephonically. Is he on?
Supervisor Goodman?
Well, we'll proceed. If he checks in with you or contacts you, just let us know and we'll acknowledge him.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. First item of the business is a county manager's report for information only. Mr. Lou.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce to you and the organization and the public that we're going to be piloting a learn and earn summer youth program. This is going to give an opportunity for us to take young people ages 16 through 20, currently enrolled in either high school or college or college equivalent. And we're going to do a seven-week program of an internship up to 40 hours a week. And we're in the process of developing with all of our elected offices and departments what types of jobs would fit these youth to help train them to get to know the county, develop them professionally, and create their future workforce. There'll be a website where people can get more information. Right now, it's just gathering people that would be interested. And then in the future, we'll be matchmaking with employment with departments and offices. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, supervisors' district updates regarding notable current or upcoming events in your districts. Supervisor Sertie, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Of course, this time of year in my district, there's tons of stuff to do, starting with March 8th, that's this weekend. A lot going on this weekend is the Brews and Blues Festival in Apache Junction and also Kearney Pioneer Days. And there's softball tournaments and lots of other things to go on down there in Kearney. And then at Peralta Park, it's also the perfect time to be using the park every weekend. I've just got a list here. This is every weekend, there's something going on out there, scavenger hunt, bird watching, bones and skulls, volunteer invasive species of pool. So lots to do this time of year. It's very dry out there. I've been warning people, even if you have cacti in your yard, like prickly pears, the prickly pears are so dry, they're melting into the earth. There's nothing wrong with watering the cactus on your properties to keep them looking good. Because if it doesn't rain from now all summer, even they will die. So don't overwater saguaros, of course, because they'll fall over. But even they need some, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Supervisor Vialito, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending today. So events and stuff that I've attended over the last two weeks. On the 18th, I go to the Maricopa City Council meetings. I was also invited to give away the awards at the Be Awesome Camp, celebration of all the kids there for Be Awesome. But Be Awesome is a nonprofit for kids and they do a great job teaching kids about, you know, law, stay out of drugs, don't drink, and you know, none of this. It's just a great thing for kids to be a part of. And that was at the elementary school in Santa Rosa. Also, on the 21st, I attended the ADOT meeting. Now, the ADOT meeting was important because we were able to get the funding for the overpass on Riggs Road, which is super important. So that funding was approved and I'm sure it's going to get to the floor and it's going to get to be approved. So then also, night for CAC, it was two lovely ladies who received scholarships. And it was to congratulate them on getting scholarships. Two, like I said, two lovely young ladies who really needed the help and got these scholarships. And I was honored to be there to present to them also. Also, Maricopa Cultura, that is an event that used to be called the Salsa Festival. And they turned it into more than just a Latin day. And this is celebrating all the cultures. And people come out with all the different foods. We have all different music from all different cultures. It was an amazing event. We probably had about 8,000 and 9,000 people show up. And it is a free event. So then, of course, attending Coolidge City Council meetings, it's important to go to those to help represent the city of Coolidge. I also was invited to the Queen Creek State of the Town. What an amazing town, 11,000 people, but overall, all of Queen Creek is about 80,000 people. And they've done some amazing stuff in their city and I was honored to be there and asked by the mayor to show up. Then we also did a celebration in Coolidge at the Water District for ribbon cutting, another great event. Again, more things, population growing, and this is stuff that we really need to back. Also, on the 28th, Mr. Miller and I were able to meet with Eli Crane, our House Representative in Congress, and enlighten us on a bunch of stuff that's going on in Congress, as you all may know. Then also, on the 28th Friday night, I was able to attend the 20th anniversary of the city of Maricopa's firefighters. And I was able to, they asked me to pick one firefighter to represent, and kind of like a firefighter of the year. And, you know, we have four houses and one administration building. And it was a tough task and I decided, there is no way I'm going to honor all of our firefighters. So I presented to each house a plaque that my colleagues here in Florence helped me with. Again, Natasha and your staff, thank you for helping me with those plaques, that I was able to present to each firehouse and the administration building. I'm a big supporter of public safety and I wanted them to know that it's hard to support one, I want to support all. So that was a great, great night. Then again, I was able to go to Cotton Days in Coolidge and I got to judge all their floats. And that was great. It was, had all these beautiful floats and they worked really hard. It was all from kids, all the way up to the firefighters, up to tractors. It was a great event. I really appreciate it. And then, you know, tonight I'll be going to Queen Creek's council meeting. And also, on Thursday, I'll be attending Maricopa's General Plan Workshop to see what they've got. Also, I'm not sure if you heard, in the city of Maricopa, there was a shooting last week. One of their officers was hit four times. He is out of the hospital, doing well. And all I can ask is, please say a prayer for this gentleman, along with his family and every other police officer nationwide, who we need to support and make sure that they all get home alive every single day. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Miller, Chairman.
Supervisor McLaurie.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Let's see. We have going on right now in Arizona City, there's road construction, new guard rails going up, guard walls, I suppose, going up at Metaglia and Sunland Gin. There's a map of it on the District 4 County website. We put that out in a newsletter. If you're not on that newsletter, you could go to the Board of Supervisors website and find my pretty picture and you can sign up for our newsletter. That would be great, because we send out, we don't send it out all the time, we just send it out to your specific area when there's something going on. We do have a cleanup going, two cleanups going on, one in Arizona City on March 21st and 22nd. And then Red Rock, we've got it on March 14th and 15th. Those are free, so show up, get rid of your stuff, so it doesn't go out in the desert. We're going to show a video in a minute, but I just want you to know, and Ms. Podasky especially, this is National Procrastination Week. And we were going to do a proclamation, but we didn't get around to it, so just so you know. So then, finally, my video is adopted County Road. It's a Laguna family up in Salmon Well. They've been doing it for 20 years to memorialize one of their family members. It's a lot of dedication and a great tribute. So if you could please run the video.
We've been doing this for quite some time. It started out when my brother had first passed away.
My dad used to always come out there and keep it going. He was one of the ones always out there cleaning, so he passed away.
It's just something special for all of us.
We do it in May and November, which is their birthdays.
It's just a very good feeling to have everybody be here and participate. And we sit and reminisce.
By doing so, they know we're always thinking about them and we know that we have our angels watching over us. While we're doing it, we're also doing a good deed.
It was wonderful to be acknowledged.
It's nice to see that recognition under that sign.
And to show on that sign and underneath it, we've been doing it for 20-plus years, that absolutely means a lot.
It is a big encouragement, because I know that we've earned it and we've worked really hard, not even knowing that any of this was going to go into acknowledgement, because obviously that's not why we're doing it.
Definitely recommend, if someone's thinking about doing it, definitely go ahead.
It's only twice a year.
It's a reason to get family together and do something that helps the community, keeps the roads clean.
So I always encourage them to help keep the county clean, because we need more of that.
And it costs nothing, because you guys provide everything. You guys provide the bags, the vests, you come pick it up, doesn't really cost you anything but time.
I would tell them, do it.
Thank you. Thank you. So we do have another video of Goodman's. Do we want to wait till he's present to show that, or should we go ahead and show it today?
Supervisor Goodman?
MIA?
He's on the call, I'm texting, so I think he's having difficulty unmuting, so.
Okay, well, we're going to assume that he's present and we're going to go ahead and roll the video, okay? Thank you.
What I love about the horses is seeing how this partnership with the horses changes the lives of the kids we work with. We work with children with developmental disabilities, autism, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy. Kids come to us most of the time by word of mouth. They hear about the power of working with horses and they want to experience that for themselves.
To hear some of the stories and the successes of these kids that so desperately need to communicate, they're finding a way to do that.
2018 Means and Miracles was founded because we saw how impactful horses were in our personal lives. Our family story entails a lot of mental health struggles, PTSD in my family. And horses as herd animals are very intuitive to our feelings and our emotions. When we saw and felt what that experience was able to offer in our journey, we really felt that this was the direction that our lives had accumulated to go. We see the transformation stories on a daily basis. One of the Kittles we started working with very early on had experienced significant trauma because of her medical journey. She had started having very significant seizures at just a couple of months old and was diagnosed with Chiari malformation, which is where part of the brain is pushing through the skull. So at six years old, she'd been through a dozen brain surgeries and her whole life had been a series of therapies and doctor's appointments and specialists and surgeries and follow-ups. And the physical therapist would come to her house and every time, she would hide. She hated physical therapy. It was hard work and it was uncomfortable. And then she started coming out here and it became her favorite, sitting on the horse. Your whole body is activated, your nervous system, cardiovascular, respiratory, it's all activated. That means that with each step, every part of your system is engaged and online. Does that sound like work? No. And it doesn't feel like work either. So these kids that are used to therapy being work, they're able to be a part of this and feel significant growth and improvement just sitting on the back of the horse. We see this in the Kittles with selective mutism that are not able to communicate, there's a blockage in how they're able to communicate person to person. One of our young ladies, Taylor, comes out here. Originally, when she first started with us, she struggled to communicate at all. We didn't hear her voice the first couple of times. And then she started talking to the horse. And then she started talking to us. Hearing her find her voice through her connection with the horses and then feel safe to connect with the humans has us in tears. We are 100% dependent upon the generosity of our community. We work with, about 20% of our clients are at or below poverty level. They don't have access to these kinds of creatures and this kind of environment in their day-to-day. So as a nonprofit, the donations of our community are what allows these kids to participate.
Over the years, we've had several nonprofit organizations come to the county requesting additional funds to help them in their programs that they have. And all of them, they're vetted to see how they help the community, how they help the individuals in our community. And so it was decided to each supervisor to take X amount of dollars and then choose from all of the programs that are in our community, who we were going to contribute to, to help them and assist them.
If we were to break down the cost of this program on a session-by-session basis, it would be $285 per session for a child to participate out here. As it is, the most anyone will ever pay is 45, the least anyone will pay is 100% free. And that is because of incredible partnerships with businesses, foundations, and individual donors who all contribute to that scholarship fund to make this accessible regardless of their family's financial situation.
It's important to me that we add to the quality of life for all individuals in our community. And when you can, when you can help a child, what that does as a parent, to be able to see your child full of joy, that does nothing but make your life more joyful in the long term.
These kids that we work with, their lives tend to be a series of doctor's appointments and therapies and hard things, really on the day-to-day, trying to fit in, trying to acclimate to the rest of the world that isn't designed for them. Here, we understand working with kids with different abilities. And our horses don't care one iota if your body or your mind works differently than the next person. And there is just, an environment allows them to be accepted and validated for who they are and how they are every day.
Okay, thank you. Any chance that Goodman can speak to us if he wants to? Supervisor Goodman? No, okay.
Can I add something?
I'm sure we'll hear something when he returns. Supervisor Sertie?
This shows why we need to make the zoning laws favorable to continue to have even more animals than we have now.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, brings us to item number three for discussion and an update from Dana Lewis and myself. And Dana, why don't you come up first and report? The CSA did not have their legislative policy meeting this last week, because everybody was in Washington DC. And it's also crossover week, so there's not a lot of activity, but we'll have some update here a little bit.
Chairman Miller, Vice Chair McLaurie, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder, and reporting to you today in regards to legislation that we work with our lobbying firm, ECO, on. Like Chairman Miller said, we were, did not have an LPC, because we previously had our ECO BOD meeting, so there isn't really a big update from our last presentation. Today is the 52nd day of session. Again, over 1,800 bills were introduced over this session. Last week was crossover week. That means hundreds of bills were read for the third time before they get sent over to the next chamber. Not heard bills are considered dead unless they come back as a striker amendment. A key date to be looking forward to would be March 28th, which is the last days for bills to be heard in the second chamber. Passed out of committee, ones that we have been following would be, of course, House Bill 2753 on groundwater, Bill 2234 on the transportation study, and 2557, which was the widening of 347. Appropriately, I like to prompt people that in the event they don't have the third read and they have anything to do with funding attachments, do not freak out, because usually it's because they're going to be wrapped into the budget. I'm a big proponent of education in legislation and anything that we do in government. So one of the things legislature has recently updated is a video on the explanation of amendments. So it's a very short video, you can go to www.aZledge.gov and watch that video to get some internal education. Any questions, gentlemen?
Any questions for Dana? I will pine just briefly on water legislation that 2573, I believe you said?
2753.
Yeah, it'll die at the governor's office because of the amendment that the Home Builders Association demanded to put on it. And then we had a bill sent from our Pinal County Water Augmentation Authority, put together some, actually just some small text change in legislation that would allow Pinal County to secure water in the future. And the sponsor chose to put it in a committee that it would not be heard in, so it died in the committee. The sponsor was TJ Shope, and I still don't understand what the need was, other than I'd heard that the Home Builders Association did not want Pinal County to have that kind of power. Very, very frustrating week for me, I think you can all see that, but I'll let it go with that for now. Any other questions for Dana? If not, I want to move to the federal. We don't usually have a lot of federal stuff, but the federal legislation that everybody needs to be aware of, please reach out to your congressman in the state of Arizona, probably the whole delegation, on the PELT funding. PELT funding is very, very important to Arizona, because I think like almost 15% of the land in Arizona is under federal jurisdiction. The PELT dollars gives us money to maintain the roads and the access to those areas, help us maintain those. The East Coast has a hard time understanding why the PELT funding is so important to the western states, but in the east, particularly east of the Mississippi, the states have very little federal land, so they are all taxed. So it's really important that the importance of the PELT funding be premier to the Arizona delegation going forward. So I'd ask that if you do converse with your federal legislators, please put that in motion for us.
And Chairman Miller, if I might add, in regards to federal legislation, one of the things that we're seeing in the elections world is the push for the SAVE Act. So in the state of Arizona, we've required documented proof of citizenship since 2004. There have been legislators and lobbyists from across the United States have reached out to those of us in Arizona in the election hemisphere, asking questions about some of the processes that we have. And so we've been having those conversations as well, sir.
Thank you, thank you for that addition to our report. Anybody have any questions on the board?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Dana. Brings us to item number four, discussion approval/disapproval of a proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors declaring March 12, 2025 Procurement Professional Day. I think we have Ms. Woods attending. Very important function in our, in our operations, so, Ms. Woods.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I am also currently supervising the individuals behind me. We have representation from my purchasing division, the members here. We also have a few members that were unable to make it today. However, I do want to thank you all for considering this item. National Procurement Day is March 12th and was established to recognize the role of procurement professionals in supply chains and procurement processes. It raises awareness of the profession to public, businesses, and government officials. The history of procurement is spotty at best. However, procurement practices have existed for thousands of years, dating back to as early as 3,000 B.C. in Egypt, where scribes were responsible for designing and recording the cost, amount of labor, materials needed for construction of pyramids. Ancient Romans created contracts when the empire, ancient Romans created contracts when empire engaged in trade. Great Britain, or William the Conqueror, used procurement processes to record revenue collections. Over time, procurement practices evolved to incorporate strategic thinking in negotiations to ensure goods and services were attained for best possible price. And practices have been adopted to allow for supply chain management, supplier competition, and control of spending. I'd like to take this moment to recognize the individuals standing behind me. They are a great team to work with. This team of individuals are responsible for supporting each and every department and function within our county. The team operates strategically to develop sourcing and procurement strategies. They do risk analysis to minimize adverse effects, you know, risks associated to those purchases. They award legally binding contracts and purchase orders. They also assure that purchases of goods and services result in the best overall value to the taxpayers of Pinal County. Additionally, the team partners with others in the county to ensure that purchases are compliant with laws, regulations, and practices. I want to thank you team for your hard work and dedication. I truly appreciate all that you do. Before the board takes any action, I do want to make you aware of an event that this team is putting together for individuals in the county. It's a procurement awareness session. It's going to be on March 25th from 2:00 to 4:00 in the Ironwood Room in this building. We want to encourage employees in our county to attend. The team has activities put together to inform best practices, what they should do, a forum for questions and answers to be had. So again, I want to thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Woods. Board, what's your pleasure on this item?
Dead silence?
Yeah.
So, I would move that we approve the proclamation, declaring March 12, 2025 as Procurement Professionals Day.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you very much. Who'd like to read the proclamation? Name?
Alexander Procurement Officer. Thank you, Chairman Miller, members of the board. By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclamation declaring March 12, Procurement Professionals Day. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers. procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas, public procurement professionals have tremendous influence on the economic conditions of the county with the cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas, public procurement professionals are uniquely positioned to build public trust in our government institutions by diligently ensuring fair and open bidding opportunities to the vending community and providing transparency in government contracting. And whereas, Pinal County recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas, NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as Procurement Month to further expand the awareness of the purchasing professional's role to government officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Pinal County. In recognition of National Procurement Month, we do hereby declare March 12, 2025 as Procurement Professionals' Day.
Thank you. Okay. Now, this is when we call in Kevin with the camera. Let's get a picture. Okay? Gentlemen, join me down there.
Sure.
One step. So we can make room for him over there. There you go. That looks good. Yeah. Look in here. Three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one. Let me double check that flash didn't go a second time. Just do one more, just to make sure. Three, two. There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Brings us to item number five on the agenda, discussion approval/disapproval of a proclamation for the week of March 17, 2025 through March 21, 2025, as Public Defenders Week. We honor the 62nd anniversary of the Supreme Court's ruling of Gideon. Who's up?
Good morning, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board. Kate Maluski, Pinal County Public Defender. Thank you for having us here today. With me, I have attorney Kevin Head, who, after you consider, may read a proposed proclamation. He is, I'd like to say a few words. I wanted you all to be able to meet him and see him firsthand. He is our first appellate lawyer in the Public Defender Office. He's our first training director in the Public Defender Office. He's an outstanding attorney, a great resource and support for our attorneys, and he is a leader in our professional development within the office. Recently, he was recognized with a statewide award from the Arizona Attorneys for Criminal Justice at Larry Hammond Leadership Award, which is a very prestigious award to receive for, for basically being a tireless advocate and somebody that the state relies on, the defense community relies on, a true protector of the constitutional rights and individual liberties that are enshrined within our constitution and so crucial to our justice system today. So, to business, if I may. Every year on March 18, the nation celebrates the landmark decision of the United States Supreme Court, Gideon v. Wainwright. Simply put, this case established that defendants have the right to an attorney, even if they cannot afford one. The case honored the principles championed by the founding fathers and enshrined in our constitution, namely, and summed up in the right to a fair trial. It recognizes the critical role Sixth Amendment counsel plays in ensuring balance in our justice system. Today, we respectfully ask this board to recognize the outstanding work of our very own Pinal Public Defenders, our staff, and contract counsel by proclaiming the week of Monday, March 17 through March 21 to be Public Defense Week, thus honoring the 62nd anniversary of Gideon v. Wainwright.
All right. Thank you. It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the proclamation proclaiming the week of March 17 through March 21, 2025, as Public Defense Week.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Miller, Mr. Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board. Again, my name is Kevin Head, the Training Director and Appellate Counsel for the Pinal County Public Defender's Office, and it's my pleasure and honor to read the Public Defense Week proclamation.
Thank you.
Whereas, on March 18, 1963, the United States Supreme Court ruled in Gideon v. Wainwright that citizens charged with a crime who cannot afford an attorney should have one appointed for them. And, whereas, public defense services not only represents its clients, but it also upholds the rights set forth in the United States Constitution of every person accused, every accused person to have a fair trial or obtain a just result from the legal process, recognizing that, as the Constitution itself implies, justice must always be balanced. And, whereas in this ruling, Supreme Court Justice Hugo Black wrote that "even the intelligent and educated layman has small and sometimes no skill in the science of law. If charged with a crime, he is incapable, generally, of determining for himself whether the indictment is good or bad, and without the aid of counsel, though he may not be guilty, he faces the danger of conviction and because he does not know how to establish his innocence." And, whereas, Pinal County continues to uphold the constitutional rights set forth in Gideon v. Wainwright through the continued growth and support of public defense services, and, whereas, the Pinal County Defense Services attorneys and their support staff members continue to work tirelessly, provide essential constitutional guaranteed legal services to those who would otherwise not have access to them, and, whereas, it's fitting to recognize and celebrate the dedication and commitment of public defenders, appointed counsel, and all those who work tirelessly to uphold the right to counsel and ensure access to justice, now therefore be resolved that the Pinal County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Monday, March 17 through Friday, March 21 to be Public Defense Week."
Thank you. Okay. Don't run off. We got a picture coming now.
Yeah. Actually, I take it back. Come on a little bit. Fill in, fill in, fill in. Actually, a little word. Miller, just a tad. There we go. And, Certy, come over just a little bit. Certy. And, look in here. Three, two. Nice. We're going to do one more. And, three, two, one. That one. Wait a second. And, three, two, one. There we go.
Brings us to item number six, which is another proclamation, the Decision Approval or Disapproval of Proclamation Identifying April as Fair Housing Month, to be read, to be read and recorded by Marshall Williams. Rolanda, or who's here to present?
Marshall is presenting.
Don't, don't fight. Just go ahead and get up there.
Good morning to everyone. Supervisor Chairman Miller, Mr. Miller, I apologize, Vice Chairman Mr. McClure, and board members. My name is Marshall Williams, and I stand before you today, as I have done so many times before, asking for the approval for the month of April to be declared as fair housing. As we look around in today's society, we find that more and more households are facing roadblocks of discrimination, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status, and disability. If everyone at this moment, in this room today, would think about this, what would I do if that happened to my family? Where would my family go? Do you know how many complaints were reported to fair housing in 2024 throughout several states in America? The land of the free, the home of the brave, the great melting pot. In California, there was 8,667 complaints. Nevada, 83. Utah, 100. Colorado, 631. And Arizona, 351. 351 too many, and the majority of those were disabilities. Now ask yourself, how can I end this? How can I make it better? What am I going to do? Let us not forget that a journey of a thousand miles began with one simple step, by proclaiming and approving April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Thank you for your time.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the proclamation identifying April as Fair Housing Month.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Who'd like to read the proclamation?
Good morning, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board. Rolanda Seifis, Director for the Housing Authority. It is my honor to read this proclamation declaring April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas, the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas, the 1968 and 1988 Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing. And whereas, the month of April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States. Now therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month and urge all citizens of the county to comply with and show their support for the letter and spirit of Fair Housing Acts proclaimed this fifth day of March 2025.
Thank you very much. Okay. Photo.
Just a little bit. There you go. Ah, looks nice. Three, two. Stand by. Three, two, one. Old fashioned. You guys look great. Three, two, one. One more. Big spot. Three, two. There we go. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Brings us to item number seven on the agenda, the Purchasing Division Report, presented by Angie Woods.
Again, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have a Purchasing Division Report for March 5, 2025. In this report, the board is requested to approve six contract amendments to exercise optional extension periods. The contracts are ROQ 204326 for on-call building safety, residential, and commercial plan review services, ROQ 204526 for on-call engineering development plan review services, ROQ 204626 on-call environmental engineering services, ROQ 205126 on-call land use planning service, ROQ 205626 on-call zoning and subdivision regulation, and lastly, IFB 1, excuse me, 230928 for asphalt pulverization services. There's one purchase order in the report that requires your approval for a change. Lastly, the report contains five purchase orders between the amounts of $100,000 and $250,000 that we have utilized cooperative contracts that we're making you aware of. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Angie? Hearing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Brings us to item number eight, which is Consent Agenda Items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board member, county manager's office, or member of the public objects at the time and the agenda item is called. I do have some from the public, but I want to ask the board, anybody from the board want anything pulled?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's already pulled, but item X.
Okay. Anybody else? County Manager's Office? Anything? So I have, from the public at this time, Lori Fuller, Q and X, Mary Ellen Flanagan, Q and X, and David Coward, N and A C. Does anybody else have anything they'd like from the public? Like anything to be pulled? Okay. Hearing and seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Consent Agenda Items A through AD minus QX, and I'm sorry I missed the other one.
N and A C.
N, as in Nancy, and A C.
Yes. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. So, so for Ms. Fuller and Ms. Flanagan, you both have pulled the same items, but I don't know that your question is the same, so, about the item. Do you want to come up and let us know what your question is on, or why? know what your question is on, why, why you want it pulled? Maybe so staff can address it?
Mary Ellen Flanagan, I live in Hidden Valley. My question on item Q is the original discussion with the developer and the neighbors was that the outside areas would be 1.25 acres per house to blend better with the 3.3 acres that are in Thunderbird Farms, so that the people living there could have horse property and animals. And there was no way to tell online if that was the final plat or not, there was just, I couldn't find anything. So that's what my question is.
Okay. And on X, while you're up there, do you want to tell us what it is about X you wanted to ask about?
Um, X, last time that we were here, well, there's two things on X. First of all, the last time we were here, the attorney said that he was unaware of which school district it was in. When we took him on a tour, I contacted Stanfield Elementary School District and ascertained that it really was in Stanfield Elementary School District, which requires 18 acres because they are a K through A school. And I explained that to him, and he had indicated that he was going to get in touch with Stanfield. I gave him the name of the superintendent. And then the other thing is, is that the commercial, if it reverts back to May of 2024, will we be able to have the nearly 25 acres of commercial land that was in the original plat so that we can have the commercial development, which will help the county as well as, as the neighbors? So the 18 acres for the school district instead of 14, and the 20, I think it's 24.6 in the original commercial.
Okay, okay. I believe Lori Fuller, you asked for the same two items to be pulled, is that, are your questions similar or the same? No, different question? Okay. I want you to go ahead and come up so we can address them all at once.
Good morning Lori Fuller, Thunderbird Farms. Good morning Supervisor Miller and supervisors. My first question about Palomino Ranch, Consent Item Q, is regarding the overall plan. When this plan, when they put up the signs about dust control, I did a public records request for all of Palomino Ranch, and the reply I got back was the entire file was redacted. At that time, I contacted Planning and Zoning and asked why it was redacted, and I asked for access to the entire file for Palomino Ranch, that was in October. Never heard back, lot of things happening, got busy. On Monday, when I saw it on the consent agenda, I once again contacted Planning and Zoning and asked to see something about the entire file for Palomino Ranch. It's a full section of land, it's over 600 acres, 1,466 homes, and my question is, without access to that information, how can the community, how, how, what happens to us when we don't have that information?
Okay.
Okay.
And on item X, did you have a different question?
Can I finish about Q?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, please.
And my other question is, so this, your consent is plat number 10, or what is it called, parcel 10? What happened to 1 and 9? When you pull parcel 10 and look at the map, you don't see any roads, you don't see anything, you don't, we can't see how parcel 10 fits into all of it. We watch, out there, we watched, the agendas pretty carefully, and I don't remember seeing 1 through 9 on a consent agenda, and yet this morning when I drove by, there's over 35 big dirt movers out there, and I'm not talking little dump trucks, these are giant, giant earth movers out there, it's all staked, they've got, they're putting the walls up for their signs, and we haven't seen approval of parcel 1 through 9. So how can they be moving dirt if, A, we didn't, when we requested access to the information about Palomino Ranch in October, it was redacted, we were never provided that information? We have not seen parcels 1 through 9 on a consent agenda, how can there be 35 huge earth movers out there?
Yeah, we'll try and answer that for you.
Okay, so that's Q.
Okay. X?
And X is regarding Sunset Canyon. Community members attended two Planning and Zoning Commission hearings and the Board of Supervisor Commission hearings, where over 11 of us spoke very lengthily about our concerns about this development, we talked about our concerns about what went on at Planning and Zoning. We asked very clearly that this not be approved. It was approved, so it went from CR3 to R7. The commercial went from 24.9 to 5 acres, all on the predication that the developer was losing all of this land to the Super Parkway of Val Vista. Since then, not even a month after the developer got the zoning change, they went back and appealed this, and recently, on today's consent agenda, they are losing, we are losing the Super Parkway, they're gaining 100 feet of roadway, because it's now been approved to only be 55 feet. What's going to happen with that 100 feet? Is it going to be more houses? We've already gone from 1,200 houses to 15 houses. What happens to that additional 100 feet? And my question is, I don't know what happens with consent items, do you table them, do you delay them? My question is, can you delay this until we can find out how this happened? How did the developer get significant zoning changes, and then not even a month later, turn around and appeal everything and say that you guys taking the land for the Super Parkway was illegal? And win that? And what happens now? We lost, like, we lost our arguments about zoning, so what happens now? Do they still get the R7 zoning? Do they still get to reduce their commercial from 24.9 down to 5? So we've lost, and then they gained 100 feet of roadway, which was their primary argument with you guys about why they needed the zoning changes. So they got the zoning changes, and then they gained the 100 feet of roadway back. How does that happen? Why did it happen? And can this consent item be delayed until we understand how it happened, why it happened, and what happens to the 100 feet of roadway? Is it more houses?
Okay. We got a lot, we got a lot, we got a lot of questions-
I do have a lot of questions.
In both of these, in both of these items.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So I'm going to take Q first, for both of you.
Do I go sit down?
You both have, yeah, if you don't mind, sit down, and we will see if we can't address each of your questions.
Good morning Chairman and-
Mr. Watermaker.
Members of the board, so to item Q, that's Palomino Ranch, excuse me, parcel 10, final plat, so hopefully I can answer some of these questions. Palomino Ranch, as was mentioned, is a 640 acre, roughly one square mile development, 22 overall phases, this is, or 22 parcels, I should say, this is parcel 10. The developer is not constructing them in the order of the names, so, you know, parcel 1, parcel 2, that's not how they're doing it. So Phase 1 of this development includes parcel 10, parcel 7, parcel 4, and parcel 9. Parcel 9 is not up for approval yet, but some of these other ones are. So this plat is for a parcel that's internal to the development and will be, have access through the roads that are being constructed right now. The question with regard to the large lots for the buffer zone, that's on the western part of the, this overall development, and that, that would be part of parcel 16 and parcel 2 in future phases. So they're building from the southeast, and, and working their way west and north from there. So with regard to the question on the records request that she submitted, I'm, I'm not aware of, I didn't see that, so I'm not sure what, what the issue there is, but we can certainly, we can meet with her-
I'm very curious why a dust permit would have been redacted, I mean, that doesn't, does anybody have any insight to that that's in this audience?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, because-
Well, I'll have to get back to you on that redaction, because I just, I agree, I, I don't know why that would be redacted, unless, Brent, are you coming to address that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, not aware of the public information request that likely went to Air Quality Group, because they're the ones that do the dust permits, but from our perspective, when we receive a public information request, the information's compiled, provided to the county attorney's office, and then the county attorney's office reviews that to see if there's private information that needs to be redacted. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I, I'm aware of that process, but I don't know what would be on a, what would be on a dust permit that would be confidential. Okay, Ms. Fuller, do we, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
It wasn't, I didn't request information for the dust permit, it was when the signs for the dust permit went up, I requested for all the information for Palomino Ranch. I, I requested all the approvals from 2002 by planning and zoning.
Okay, so your question is slightly different.
Okay, well, I, I can get with her and, and get the records request number that, that she submitted, and any documents that we have that she did not get, we can get that to her. That's not a problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chris. Now, how about Z? Who wants to address Z?
X.
X, I'm sorry, X. Yeah, one of those letters.
And my question, well, my question was just, I just want a clarification on it, and I'd had conversations with some folks, so I just wanted to pull it and have Mr. States explain it to us if he can.
Okay.
Who happens to be right there, but we'll-
Okay. Let's give him a minute. Counselor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my office will also look into what, if there was a process breakdown, we're going to look into this, and we can report back to the board at the next board meeting.
Okay.
We will look into this and figure out what happened, if we actually received it, if we were in charge of those redactions, but we'll get back to-
And that's on the redaction portion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So-
I was asking for Mr. States if he could-
Mr. States, you have, it sounds like Supervisor McClure has a question on X.
Which will probably address X for-
Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure? Yes.
Okay.
So the question, well, what's the question? Now you're making me work, let's see, so I was, I was curious about this, so what is happening? Is commercial coming back on this, the 24.9 acres? We've already discussed school issues, I know the road's being realigned back to the north, can you explain the reasoning why the road was moved back to the north, and I think you get my gist here?
Absolutely. So Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, supervisors, I'll, I'll address how we got here, right, the, the origin of this. So on December 4th of last year, there were two items that were brought. There was a PAD amendment, that's a Planned Area Development, so an amendment to the existing PAD on the Sunset Canyon development. That PAD was originally approved in 2003, they wanted to make certain amendments to it, and then they also brought another item that was to, excuse me, rezone the property. ARS Section 11832 provides that landowners can submit an administrative appeal of any dedications that are required as a condition of a county or government entity's approval of a development. So the landowner submitted its appeal on December 30th. Per the statute, the matter was assigned to a hearing officer. The parties filed a joint pleading before the hearing officer identifying certain stipulations that were within the PAD amendment that would address and resolve the issues that were raised by the property owner. The issues that were raised by the property owner were two. The realignment of Val Vista Road, as you can see on the visual conceptual plan that's posted, Val Vista Road was going to be realigned to cut through the property, but under the 2003 original PAD, it was just going to run along the north or the top of that visual representation. So one of the, the stipulated recommendations of the parties to the hearing officer would be to eliminate that stretch of Val Vista Road that cuts through the property and realign it to where it was from 2003 until December 4th of last year. The other challenge dedication, you can see in the green that borders the right edge, or that would be the eastern boundary of the property, that was a drainage dedication that's visually illustrated on this conceptual map, and the parties in their joint filing agreed to restore the drainage dedications back to what they were under the 2003 original PAD. So essentially, it would be taking those two challenge dedications and restoring them to what they had already been for the last 21 years. So that's, that's how we got here, and that's what would be changed under the recommendations that now the hearing officer has provided to the board. So the way that it works in this instance, and this is pursuant to that statute that I referenced earlier, the hearing officer makes recommendations to the board, the board can choose to approve or deny those recommendations, the board could also choose to continue this to a date certain at a subsequent board hearing, or board meeting, excuse me. With regard to what happens to that stretch, if more houses would be put in place, the density does not change. So the developer cannot put any greater quantity of homes within the development if the board approved these recommendations. All these recommendations would do is put Val Vista Road back to where it was for the last 21 years, and the drainage dedications back to what they were for the last 21 years. The recommendations do not alter the size of the school parcel, they do not alter the size of the commercial parcels. It's just the, the drainage on that green edge and putting Val Vista Road back to the northern alignment.
But not bringing back the commercial that was there from the 2003?
No, it, all this alters, it essentially, oh, and with rezoning, it does not change the rezoning at all. So everything that was approved on December 4th, 2024, would remain the same except the drainage dedication and the Val Vista Road alignment. The commercial would remain unchanged, the school, the density of housing units would remain unchanged, and the zoning would remain unchanged.
And so they, in, in the discussion here a little earlier, the school would need more room than that, so they'd have to talk with the developer?
That, that is something that we could look into-
Possibly.
-to confirm. I will say that at this stage of the process, as I understand it, a, a lot of what's depicted on the, the visual plan is at a conceptual level, and when the development were brought for plating approval, that's kind of where we would get to brass tacks, so to speak, as far as if, if there's something different or more that would need to happen that's not depicted in the visual representation, because by the time they plat this to prepare to break ground, that could be years and years down the road. So at this stage, this is largely conceptual, but what they have dedicated right now is the 14 acres for the school, and if we're, if more were to be required, then that would have to be addressed at that plating stage, we'd have to confirm, is more required and why, what is that attributable to?
My memory's a little short on some of this, because I know that Val Vista was going to be a road of regional significance, and go across there, and I know it affects other parcels as well, but what has happened now to that plan, I think that's Mr. Watermaker's world. Not to call you on the carpet here, Mr. Watermaker, but, you know-
Chairman Supervisor, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Well, the question is, what happens to the Val Vista alignment and the road of regional significance? If we remove this and go up to 347, what happens to it on the, sorry, on the eastbound side?
Yeah, so for the section east of 347, it would remain where it's always planned to be. One thing I do want to mention is this alignment that you see that was originally approved in December, this realignment, I guess I should say, that was as part of our Regionally Significant Routes for Safety and Mobility Transportation Plan. So that plan is quite old, and we are in the process right now of doing an updated transportation plan for this region. It's called the West Penale Transportation Study. It's ongoing. And if this alignment were to change back to the northern boundary, we would just update this ongoing plan to reflect that new alignment. And then any impacts of that would then have to be reflected with potentially other changes in other roads to basically serve the same regional purpose. So we would just have to accommodate it with our study, I guess I'm saying. So...
Okay, thank you.
Chairman? So the 24 acres will be put back of commercial. I keep hearing the school, but...
No. Excuse me. Chairman Miller, Supervisor Vitello, no, that would not be part of the hearing officer's recommendations. So in this instance, under their administrative appeal, the property owner challenged the roadway and the drainage alignments and dedications. Those are the only things that would be changed from what was approved on the December 4th, 2024 PAD amendment for this property.
So no commercial?
There is commercial. It would not change from what was approved on December 4th. I believe there's five acres? 4.37 acres is the number I have.
I don't even see it reflected in this.
Yeah, I can't...
Unless you're putting it in the middle of the street, it's not going to be there. There's nothing on this map.
Yeah, correct.
And to that point, this visual representation, this is being utilized just to illustrate where the road was going to be as approved on December 4th, and the drainage, and where they would be reverting back to as far as the exact placement of the school lot, the homes, the commercial. That would probably be confirmed at the final plating stage.
So let me be clear, just for everybody's... Item X is we're going to approve or disapprove the hearing officer's recommendations to the amendment of this PAD?
Yes, Chairman Miller.
Okay. And the recommendation does not include more commercial? It does not? It changes the alignment of Val Vista back to an original alignment of many years ago, we'll say?
Yes.
Okay. They cannot, there's no more lots. They don't increase their lot number?
Correct.
To what they indicated. So really, the question is, do we, are we going to approve the recommendation from the hearing officer? That's really the question.
For the removal of the two or three stipulations that...
Yeah. And so, that's what we're voting on, guys.
Right, and then, right, I understand that, so I'm off track a little bit. But moving forward, then, this comes back for review for commercial or not?
Not unless...
If we don't recommend, if we do not recommend the, or don't approve the recommendation from the hearing officer, do, is, what's the next step? Because if it doesn't go forward like this, they don't want the road like that. So are we back to the drawing board? Are we back to the negotiations?
We go back to the administrative appeal process. And then if the property owner isn't satisfied with how that goes, they can also bring it to the Superior Court thereafter.
Some of this comes from a SCOTUS case, is that true?
That's correct.
That's right. And I guess the other option would be to either table it or continue it? Those are two other options.
And just to clarify the record, if I may?
Sure.
Chairman Miller, supervisors. What would be changed? There are four stipulations at issue that were previously approved in the December 4th, 2024 action on the PAD amendment. Namely, those are Stipulation 2, Stipulation 4, Stipulation 6, and Stipulation 7. What that looks like is first, starting with 2, it would effectively add the following language to the end of Stipulation 2, which deals with referencing that 2024 visual conceptual plan that was just on there a moment ago and that we've been referring to throughout this discussion. And it would modify it to clarify that although that May 2024 visual depiction shows Val Vista Road and the drainage dedications, as we previously discussed, that those would be reverting back to their previous locations and sizes. And here's the verbiage that would effectuate that in Stipulation 2. And this is being added to the end of it. Provided, however, the Val Vista Parkway, which bifurcates the property, the 150-foot wide Parkway in a north-south direction shown on the plan, the plan meaning this visual depiction, shall not be required and is deleted from the plan in its entirety. And then with drainage, quote, "And the regional drainage area shown on the plan has been deleted in its entirety as a requirement of this development," end quote. That is the change to Stipulation 2. With regard to Stipulation 4, which deals exclusively with the Val Vista Road dedication. Again, it adds language, making it clear that that bifurcating 150-foot strip will be eliminated, and Val Vista Road will revert to its northern alignment where it was for the last 21 years. With language, additional language, including, "Provided, however, in no event shall the county require a 150-foot wide Parkway in a north-south direction as shown on the plan that bifurcates the development." And it also refers to Val Vista being restored to its existing alignment per the 2003 PAD amendment. Now, with regard to Stipulation 7, that dealt with drainage. That stipulation would be eliminated in its entirety with the party's joint agreement and understanding that any drainage dedications that are necessary for the development at the time of plating approval will be determined and negotiated.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we recess the regular meeting and have a, and go into executive session.
Go into executive session. Okay. I think that's wise. So I have a motion to go into exec session on item X. I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Back to order on the Board of Supervisors meeting and address item X at this time. Mr. State, you did have something you wanted to...
Thank you, Chairman Miller.
...point out today?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to mention that this visual representation that we've been referring to in this meeting, want to recognize on the record that we'll be incorporating it into the record on this item for this meeting. And also mention that this was an excerpt of the materials that were already utilized and relied upon in the December 4th, 2024 board meeting on those prior, the prior PAD amendment. Thank you.
Okay. All right, board. We're here to either approve or disapprove the hearing officer's recommendation on the PAD amendment of 2024 PZ PD 008-23.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to disapprove item X. And I'd like to explain why, or should I wait till my vote?
Well...
It can be discussed right now, I believe.
Yeah. I would need a second first before we could discuss.
What do we want to discuss before?
Okay. We can discuss now.
So my reason...
Okay to discuss at this level? Pardon me? Okay. Okay.
My reasoning for discussion is that the last I saw and the last I thought that the 24 acres would come back to this area for commercial, with the realignment of the road. And I think it's very important for the people out there to have this 24 acres. We need commercial out there, and I think that's something that the constituents would agree with me on. And so that's why I am motion to disapprove this.
To that point, though, the 24 acres is not part of the recommendation from the hearing officer. So all we're voting on is whether or not we take the recommendation of the hearing officer, which does not include the commercial land. Is there a second for his motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a second to disapprove the hearing officer's recommendation. All in favor of disapproving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 Oh, now he's here.
Yeah. Wow. Which, is he clear what he's voting on? I just want to make sure. The delayed reaction of the telephone.
Supervisor Goodman, just confirming that that was a nay vote to disapprove.
Can we pause for a commercial break?
Supervisor Goodman, if you could repeat that vote, or if we can just confirm that your vote was nay for disapproval.
I apologize, everybody, for the...
Supervisor Goodman?
Nay. Did you hear me?
Yes, your vote has been recorded as nay for disapproval.
Okay, so that motion does not pass. Another motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, not that I'm happy about it, but I move that we approve the hearing officer's recommendations as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes 32. To approve the recommendations of the hearing officer. Okay, that completes item X. We'll move back up to item Q. I believe the discussion there was the redacted paperwork for Ms. Fuller. And for Mrs. Flanagan, they will not be take, they're not going to develop in sequence. So they may be jumping around on the parcels. Nine and one will eventually come up. So just so you kind of understand that they're, they don't necessarily take the parcels in the same sequence. Are you okay with that, that explanation? Mrs. Flanagan, are you...
I am, I am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so on item Q, the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item Q as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those signify by saying aye, approve signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, now, we still have some more consent items we need to discuss. I believe it's N. N? Pulled by Mr. Dave Coward. Dave, do you want to tell us kind of what your question is? So the staff addresses it for you?
My name is David Coward from Gold Canyon. I'm representing Gold Canyon Community, Inc. And I could address both N and AC if you want to move this on along.
Sure, if you want. Yeah, no, that's fine. No, thank you. Thank you.
Basically, N is dealing with a Forest Service grant for wildfire mitigation. And for your edification, that our organization has hosted in our area in Gold Canyon, a HOA summit where we invite the leaders of all the HOAs in our area to come together periodically. We've had three meetings so far. And we just wanted to mention that the wildfire danger up in our area is prevalent in that community. And also, as far as AC is, is about getting more funding for the Sheriff's Department for public safety. And speeding is an issue in our area. We've been asking the sheriff to do more patrols and regulate that. So we would support both the Sheriff's Department on AC and hope that some of those, that money can be directed to our community. And the same with N and the Office of Emergency Management. We stand ready to support whatever they have. Or if they're giving grant money for us to do any education. You can't do much with $40,000. But we might be able to do some education meetings and stuff like that. So we stand ready to support that as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Your comments are duly noted. So brings us to item N. Does anybody have any questions or discussions more about that? Do I have a motion on N?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item N as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. And then that takes us to AC, I believe.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve AC as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. So we will recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and move into our Penale County Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting. So we have all consent items. So all items indicated, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does any board member have anything they want removed from our Public Health Services District? County Manager's Office, from the public? Anybody from the public? Seeing none? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent items A through C on the Penale County Public Health Services District Agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. I adjourn the Public Health District Service District meeting, and we'll move on to item number 10. number 10, call to the public. I don't have any cards at the moment, but this young lady just brought me some. So, call to the public. Dee, come on up, come on, give us- Dia. Oh, okay. Go ahead, come on up. Take you first. Call to the public.
My name is Dia Padaski, and I live in unincorporated Pinell County, near the Superstition Mountains, which are sacred to the Pima and Apache people. Today, I will be providing rationale for a proposal I made earlier to invite veterans to lead the Pledge of Allegiance during meetings. Details of my proposal will be provided to Ms. Kennedy for distribution. Members of my family have served in the U.S. military from the War of Independence till today. Recently, I attended a storytelling event at the Mays Art Center. The last storyteller was a Vietnam War veteran who had served two tours as a helicopter pilot. His uniform shirt was the story's unifying image. At discharge, he was told that civvies were available, and that it was recommended that he change into them as war protesters were outside. He took the advice, but did not throw his uniform into the bin provided, but instead placed the shirt in the new provided luggage. The next time the shirt appeared in the story was the teller's first day at university. His wearing the shirt labeled him when he went to the Union for lunch. He was not welcomed at the hippie table, the jock table, the frat table, nor the doppler table. When he was about to sit alone, a man approached him and said, hey, come sit at the veterans' table. As he sat, he was greeted by a chorus of welcome home. Skip forward, his views on the war changed, but his pride in his and others' service did not. One day, one of his friends called and suggested they go to the Washington for the dedication of the Vietnam Memorial. They taped the shirts and left them at the base of the wall near the names of fallen comrades. By this time, I was sobbing. I've been to the wall three times. My brother-in-law died in Vietnam. I have felt its power. The final time the shirt appeared in the narrative was when he and his wife visited the Smithsonian Museum of American History. There, on the display featuring items left of the wall, was his shirt. The story teller said that at that moment, for the first time, he felt truly welcomed home by his country. This is a difficult time for veterans. There are cuts to program. Black and women leaders have been replaced by less qualified white men. The commander-in-chief has disparaged members of the military, suggested to be used in questionable ways, and has forsaken traditional allies. Regardless of whether you agree with me on those points, we should agree on valuing the service of veterans. Inviting them to the Pledge of Allegiance could be Pinell County's version of welcome home. In my last 25 seconds, I want you to think about the words in that pledge. One nation, indivisible, under God, add it later, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, is it Hillsbaugh? Hillsbaugh?
She had to leave.
Oh, she did? Okay. Looks like H-E-I-P-I Miller? Heidi? Heidi Miller? She's gone? Okay. Anybody else from the audience that'd like to speak? Okay, called, this is called to the public, not an agenda item, but-
I'm back. I'm confirming that I'm handing this to Ms. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Fuller, can you come up?
Laurie Fuller, Thunderbird Farms. I didn't fill out a card, I didn't intend to speak at call to the public, but given item X and the discussions about it, it brought up a topic that is very real to all of our hearts out at Thunderbird Farms in Hidden Valley and Papukagobutes, and that's the process. So when we go to planning and zoning meetings and board of supervisors, and I know you guys' agenda is packed, but it's five people overseeing a county that's huge, and the process where taxpayers and residents of those communities only get to talk for three minutes, and the lawyers get to talk forever, and they get to come, they get to call up their own experts, and after we get to talk, they get to rebuttal us, they get an unlimited rebuttal. And that's what happened at Sunset Canyon. We had very valid points about that road. We had very valid points as to why it shouldn't be R7, and why we should not lose the commercial just because of the road, and then that developer turned around not even a month later and appealed that? You don't think that was his plan right from the very start to get the zoning change and then appeal it? And I just want to say, if we had been given a chance to have just one person speak after the lawyer, because the lawyers are so smart, they're paid to be here, they're paid to talk, and he went on and on and on about the road, and the clock was ticking, and everybody gets restless, and I don't want to say that our concerns got, were forgotten, but your agendas are packed, and after he goes on and on about the road and drainage and how unfair it is, we don't get to stand back up and say, but wait a minute, what he said isn't fair to us, so could we have, could you change your procedure so the community can just have one last sentence, three minutes after the lawyer speaks, because otherwise the last thing you hear is from the developers and the lawyers? And let me tell you, all they want is to make money. They don't care what happens to our community. They don't care that once they get their 2,100 homes, our land is gone forever, our horse properties are gone forever, that land is now houses. Those guys get paid to speak and convince you that what you have to do is what they tell you to do. If a community member could have three minutes rebuttal to refocus your your attention to it's us that are affected by those developments, I really think we could make a difference. If a community member could have come back up and said, wait a minute, that road is messing everything up, maybe this wouldn't have happened.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the community? Mr. Ravelis?
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, this is what's so beautiful about our country, that everyone has an opportunity to express themselves, and it really moves me that we live in this beautiful society where people can express themselves freely. The proclamations that were approved today, what I heard from the Capitol last night, it all is part of this beautiful preamble to our Constitution. We're all working towards a more perfect union. I disagree with much of what happened last night. I remember listening to 90 minutes of oratory from Fidel Castro. Some might say comparable to what we heard last night, but it all is part of this beautiful fabric, because we're all trying to work towards something better. And it was overwhelming to hear the speaker last night compare himself to being even better than the founder of our nation, and he said it in his own words. So it's a first month that's created a lot of chaos and confusion that even this board is confused and unable to decipher what federal funds, for example, this county can count on as we get ready to prepare our budget. His endless series last evening of contradictions that have set the stage for what we taxpayers are going to try to constructively work with you to accomplish. The economic engine that drives this county was mentioned in the remarks last night, where he spoke in contradictions, this CHIPS Act, that he wants to end it. That's what's driving this county. In fact, to Medicaid, which helps 2 million Arizonans, that was placed under threat last night. Tariffs affecting our major trading partners to North and South, mass deportations of workers who harvest our crops, who build our homes, who clean our buildings, cook in our restaurants, and who pay every time they consume something. But these are the challenges we have to work on, and I promise that I will be engaged. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we'll move to item number 11 on the agenda, discussion approval or disapproval of a recommendation for the Justice of the Peace Selection Committee for the appointment of Ann Palmer or Reggie Winston to the Pinell County Justice of the Peace Casa Grande Court. Supervisor Vialto?
Rich works.
And I conducted some interviews last Friday, and I think I'll allow Supervisor Rich to opine at this point in time.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so we had a few candidates submit their names, and, you know, you read them over and over again, and you constantly try to figure out who to pick, and, you know, either one that we would have picked would have been fantastic. They were both pleasant people, smart people, knowledgeable people, but unfortunately, only one could win or be appointed. So I'm going to recommend, Chairman Miller, that we recommend Mr. Reginald Winston for the nomination and appointment of the Justice Court for Casa Grande, District Number Two.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
And if I, maybe I should talk a little bit about him if you'd like, tell you a little bit about him, so that way maybe you know, or would you prefer me to?
Would you like to hear a little bit about it?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Winston has been an officer, and forgive me if I may get a year or two off, but he was a Casa Grande officer for 25 years. He has served the city of Casa Grande very honorable. He's been appointed as a pro temp judge in Pinell County Justice Court in 2022. He's also gone through extensive training, you know, small claims hearings, officer training, civil traffic hearings, many, many trainings that the gentleman needs to do for this job. He's also been a veteran. The gentleman also, again, Mr. Winston, has dedicated 25 years, more of his life for public service. He's been a Marine, will always be a Marine. He's also served us in the Army. He'll always be an Army vet. The gentleman just has so many qualifications, and I am honored to say 50-plus years of service this this Mr. Winston has done is, one of the main reasons I picked him, because the man just loves to serve. He came to us with smiles, he was a little nervous in the beginning, and then he killed it. He was awesome. He lightened up, he got very relaxed, and he became himself, and I got to tell you something, I was honored to be part of this, Chairman, I do appreciate that. So again, my, here's why I picked him, so, again, it's my nomination.
Thank you.
Chairman, last time we did this, we had an executive session, did we not? Last time we filled one of these positions?
I can't recall. I don't recall that, but do you want to go into executive session on this?
Yes.
Okay, then make a motion.
I move we go into executive session on this item.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. I'll allow that request. You good?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay, and eyes have it. Reggie, you're up. Do we want him to sign and?
Yes, yes, Chairman.
Could you please come forward?
Yeah.
You can just hold it, you can just sit it here. If you have a couple of minutes, you can raise your hand. Okay.
She works in the court.
Please raise your, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Reginald Winston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Justice of the Peace.
Justice of the Peace.
Precinct Number Two.
Precinct Number Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Get a picture of him? I think so.
You got the motion.
All right. That brings us to, I believe that was 11, was it not? We're up to 12. Brings us to item number 12 on the agenda, which is an exec session. So we already are, we're just going to reconvene the exec session.
We'll recess, recess this meeting.
Recess the board of supervisors' meeting, and we'll come back and watch us adjourn. It's amazing.
We're in a meeting.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.